Roll call or call the, call the meeting to order, roll call vote please. A roll call, roll call, whatever.
Brian Card.
Here.
Norman Ferrin.
Present.
Michael Huco.
Yeah.
John Serantopoulos.
Yes.
Lorraine Lagard.
Here.
And Keith Thurlo.
Here.
Okay, seating of alternates, we have none, we've got a full board. Agenda addendums?
None at this time.
Okay, citizens comments on public hearings, review, discussion, action. Do you want the first one or add two?
The first one, citizen comments on, on items not subject to a public hearing, so.
Yes. Individual presentations not to exceed three minutes, limited to an aggregate of 21 minutes unless otherwise indicated by majority vote of the commission. Public comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the Town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comments must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. The public comments received will be posted on the town's website, www.killenlyct.gov. As this is a hybrid meeting, citizens can participate in the citizens comment by webex. Joined by phone, 1-415-655-0001. Okay, anybody got comments of things that's not on the public hearing tonight? Not on the public hearing, so.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jasmine Birdy. I live at 125 Lake Road in Davil. And just an issue separate from this proposed project is that on Lake Road, we have signs that say no tractor trailer trucks from the end of Lake Road towards 101 before Unify. And I just keep seeing them come constantly, like all day and all night. And I have kids that, you know, live with me, and there's other kids on the road too. And it's just a traffic issue, it's a safety issue, especially when other cars are coming around the turn there. Where right after Unify, we're heading towards 101, there's like the S-turn there. They are constantly going that way when they're not supposed to be, and there's obvious signs marked. And there's so many, you know, potential accidents and almost accidents that I've seen. I've almost been hit by them too, coming, you know, going home, and a tractor trailer just, you know, comes down around the corner there. So I'm wondering if, if that could be something to be looked into, because it's just like a big problem on our road right now. And I know a lot of other, of my neighbors have felt the same way, so I just wanted to speak on that and see if there's anything that could potentially be done about that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else want to speak to anything that's not on the public hearing? Public hearings, review, discussion, action. Public hearing comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the Town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comments must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public hearing comments received will be posted on the town's website. To participate in the public hearings, the public may join the meeting via telephone while viewing the meeting on Facebook Live. To join by phone, please dial 1-415-655-0001 and use the access code 28681607049. All right, special permit application 251356, KPC Killenly owner continuation. And if you could introduce yourself for the record again, please, and go from there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, very, very happy to be here again. My name is Mark Grockie. I'm a senior project manager with VHB. Our office is located at 100 Great Meadow Road in Weathersfield, Connecticut. I'm here with Perry Gold and Reggie Kronstadt on behalf of ownership of Crown Point Capital. And some of my experts, Charlie Baker and Nathaniel Fleming from VHB here as well.
And all that, gentlemen? Okay. Go ahead and make your presentation and continue with it.
No, thank you, thank you again for having us. So just to kind of recap, the properties here, numbers 35 and 53, out of wagon crossing road. What I have on the screen here is the current aerial of the existing conditions of the property, just to reorient everybody. Interstate 395 located immediately west of the site with the exit ramp directly west of us here. And I'll just jump right into our proposed conditions here, so. What we really tried to-
Can you hold on a second? We've got it.
I can switch them if you prefer. I tried to have at least one of them.
Oh. Either way, I've been realizing usually it's both going, so.
Okay. So we, we heard a number of comments, number of concerns at the last meeting, and we really tried to absorb and understand and really tried to massage and accommodate the site design while catering to your comments, while still trying to fulfill what 7-Eleven is, is trying to accomplish here. So what I've prepared is I want to go through the seven or eight comments from the commission last time. We're going to document how we're in compliance with some of the gravel or the earth excavation regulations, the town engineer comments. So I think one of the, one of the largest changes you'll, you'll immediately notice on the site is the easterly side of the site. There's no more tractor trailer parking along there, except for maybe a short, I'm sorry, a narrow bandwidth of a couple of tractor trailer parallel spaces. But the majority of the tractor trailer parking is now completely shifted to the east side of the site. This actually was, was a great benefit for our cut and fill, reduces the fill required for the site almost by half. And I think this really satisfies the biggest comment about, comment number one from Mr. Card was really, you know, how can we look at the site layout, accommodate maybe noise, impacts to neighbors, et cetera? So with the tractor trailer parking being removed from the east side, we're actually entirely out of the 200-foot upland review buffer to the wetlands to the east. We've, we've extended our distance to this easterly most neighbor by another 30 or 40 feet. So we're about 230 feet now from this curb line to this easterly neighbor. So we really tried to take all of that easterly impact and move it to the west side closer to the highway. The highway already has a lot of noise to it, so it's kind of going to be absorbed into that. The, the orange line here will still be the white vinyl screening fence. So we're still going to be proposing a fence along that easterly side. But I think, I think that is, really should be looked at as a tremendous benefit now to the site in, in trying to really massage the site while still keeping what 7-Eleven needs, what they anticipate, and really trying to accommodate, you know, being a good neighbor, neighbor to the east. So again, I'm just going to kind of go through the planning and zoning comments. The biggest one was that number one, what to kind of do about an impact and noise to the neighbors. So with, with that, we also propose a number of the no idling signage. That was, that was suggested last time, so we found the no idling signage. We posted that along the east side and the west side, so that should be taken care of. Comment number two was addressing the gravel regs, or really the earth excavation regulations. I can go through all those in a minute, but we feel we satisfied all of those. Comment three from the commission last time was make sure that there are submitted, submitted written responses from the engineers' comments. We did respond to all engineering comments. We did receive, or we didn't receive, but I understand that the town received a letter or an email from the town engineer saying that all comments were satisfied last Thursday, so engineering comments are all satisfied. The fourth comment from last time was in terms of the traffic analysis and land use code. If there's any additional follow-up, my, my expert Charlie Baker can, can weigh in. But essentially, it was, it was brought up whether or not the correct land use code for the traffic impact study was used. And we looked at what was used, which was a convenience or gas station land use code versus a truck stop land use code. And what the analysis shows is that if we were to switch land use codes, it would actually result in less trip generation. So meaning, the current analysis that we do have with the current land use codes that are in the analysis, right now in the traffic report, they, they reflect a higher trip generation, would be considered a more conservative analysis, and all intersections nearby still function adequately. So with, there really is no purpose to, to downgrade to a lesser conservative land use code. So we feel that, that is satisfied. There was a question or a comment about our stormwater calc, and we, we actually re-listened to the tapes of the meeting last time. The stormwater calc's were kind of intertwined with the land use disturbance, maybe some questions in our stormwater analysis memo. So we went back, and what that was, the stormwater memo was correct. We indicated that three and a half acres of, of development area, quote unquote. That, that was really meant to be a curb-to-curb development area, and the overall footprint with all the grading, that's five acres. So just to avoid any confusion, we actually just completely took out the three and a half number. The true overall disturbance is again, is about just over five acres, so that's corrected in the stormwater calculations. One big point last time was the curb cuts. And the zoning regulations require a 30-foot wide versus 35-feet wide. We were able to accommodate 30-foot wide curb cuts. We did do a redesign, and we, we reran our truck turning templates. And what we are proposing, which is very standard engineering practice, is, is mountable curbs on several of the entrances just to allow for any of the bigger, larger tractor trailers not to kind of go over and encroach into the landscaping. So they were, they would essentially mount very minorly onto that mountable curb area. So that allows us to choke in the driveways at 30 feet for zoning regulation compliance, but still allow for the larger tractor trailer vehicles to still enter the site safely. And the last comment from commission, as we understand it, was the landscape buffering to the northerly neighbors. One thing we've proposed, I'll kind of zoom in here. This northerly island was, was big in, in the comments. And what we are proposing to buffer the neighbors to the north, again, these, this first drive aisle here is actually three feet lower than the adjacent grades over here. But we are proposing a rather robust army of inkberry hollies, some more vegetation shrubs right along this northern landscaped island. And if you look over here where the new tractor trailer parking is, this is actually set right next to a berm. This is a three-foot-high berm. We have a number of evergreens along the berm. And again, similar to the front landscaped island, a number of inkberry hollies to kind of buffer any, any headlights or anything to the north. And one last little buffer right over here on this easterly corner of the site. So we, again, we really tried to take in all your comments, tried to massage the plan as best we could and really, really get to what we think is a very positive impact right next to the highway of what could be a very profitable business here in Killenly. As I mentioned earlier, we needed to go through the earth filling and excavation regulations. I did submit a narrative describing each bullet point, how we did comply to all of those regulations. I'm just going to kind of pick and choose maybe five or six of them, because some of them are pretty straightforward about grading and contours and note, and if we're, have an ENS plan, which we, we fully comply with erosion and sediment control in our plan set. But just a couple of these, we need to submit an operation statement, which basically described what our cut-fill operations would be. Again, as I mentioned before, now that there are no, now that there are no parking spaces to the east, this has significantly reduced the amount of fill almost by half, bringing fill into the site. So quick calculation, if a dump truck's about 16 cubic yards, rough estimate says dump trucks entering the site to dump off fill to raise grade should be somewhere between 25 and 30 days for construction operation. Very, very standard with this type of site here. Our erosion and sediment control plan is fully designed with the Connecticut ENS guidelines. There's no onsite refueling operations during construction, so there's no fuel during construction, which was something specifically mentioned in the earth excavation rigs. We have temporary stockpiles shown on our erosion and sediment control plan for compliance. We will comply fully with Connecticut deep requirements in terms of if this is an NDDB area or a SHPO historic area. We're actually not in an NDDB, and what that means is it's a national diversity database for threatened or endangered species. We already looked into that, we're not in an area that impacts that. We will have to go to SHPO, the state historic preservation office, no matter what, because of our Connecticut DEP general permit requirement. So they, they're going to get a bite at the apple for erosion and setup control, so no issues there. It's very standard to do. In terms of noise during construction, there's nothing outstanding that's going to happen, it's just a natural construction occurrence. Again, we are next to a highway, so I think the highway already has a little bit of noise expected. And, and I think last, from these earth excavation regs, you know, even though these regs, they seem to be written more towards a quarry operation with a lot of excavation. We have very minimal excavation, a lot of it's going to be that fill, like I said. But just to disclose, these, these tanks up in front here, they'll require about a 17-foot deep cut just to get the tank safely in there. There is some bedrock, expected around 10 feet deep. Typically, a lot of the rock can be hammered out. If they do need to have blasting or anything like that, it wouldn't take more than a couple of days. A contractor would be fully compliant to, or will be made fully aware with notes on the plans to make sure that they completely follow the guidelines. We're going to make sure that there's notes on the plans, make sure that the contractor knows that they have to go to the fire marshal for a plan should blasting happen. But again, we're not anticipating, it should just be rock hammering for that. We have a full geotechnical engineering report that discusses test pourings around the site. So with all that, in short, we do feel that we follow the earth filling and excavation regulations. And I think last, just to kind of sum up from the changes from last time, a commission member wanted to make sure that the engineering comments were satisfied. A lot of the comments were very technical in nature. The, the, one, one comment was that the town engineer wanted truck signage. We massaged our signage plan, we do have truck entering, if you look on the board here, truck entering signage at the curb cut. We have vehicle exiting and entering at this curb cut, and truck exiting signage at this curb cut. We have signs here and over here for a no-through, no-through traffic, because I know there was concern last time if anybody should be coming down this way, if there's any through traffic, what are you going to do? So we have some no-through traffic here. And, and I know there's a traffic comment last time with the engineering comments about the Tracy Road, Lake Road upper middle street, you know, the Frito-Lay area west. That was addressed at the previous meeting. So I think with that, I can hope you find that we, we tried to really work hard and shift around the entire site to, to make it work. Again, less environmental impacts, less impacts to the neighbors to the east, less impacts with the, with the landscape buffering to the north. And be more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Commissioners?
I have one question. Some of the concerns were about the lighting, and I know last time, I just can't recall what you said you were doing to buffer it so that it would be in, in where the housing is.
Sure. Well, first and foremost, all the lighting is downcast. It's all night sky compliant. We have a photometric study that makes sure there's no obtrusive lighting beyond the property limits. So really, that inherently of itself satisfies that.
Other commissioners? Any other questions?
I have a question for the attorney. Is this 395 enterprise zone still in effect?
I heard you talking about that, and I don't know. I started, maybe, yeah, do you know?
You're asking if that site in particular is part of the enterprise zone? No. They would not have enterprise zone benefits where it's taxed at them. Everything is over to the left, starting at Frito-Lay, over on that side, on the map.
That was one time enterprise, that across the street? I'm pretty sure.
Currently not listed on the map.
So you got oil-water separators located, I didn't see that on the map.
Yes, correct, for the stormwater management system?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can zoom in. Right here is the last connection point for catch basins. So right there, we are proposing an oil-water separator large enough to handle the entire site for water quality flow purposes. Actually, that reminds me, I think Mr. Card's comment last time was access to the, to the fore bay here. So we kind of massaged the gravel access path to make sure that we can get around the entire basin at this point. Should maintenance be a concern, we need to maintain the basin. We have a gate directly in front of the outfall for maintenance of the fore bay. I wanted to mention that, too.
And the key for that gate maintained inside for the staff, or?
Yeah, I, generally, you don't, we don't find that locking them is that necessary.
Okay.
But, you know, if, I'm sure if there's a-
No, if there's a gate and locked, then it wouldn't need a key, I would think.
Yeah.
What size is the oil-water separator?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but I do know it's engineered for a water quality volume requirement.
Now, is there a regular schedule on maintenance on that?
Yes, we have a, operations and a lot, excuse me, long-term operations and maintenance schedule that was submitted in our stormwater management report. So it's essentially, after the first year, it's inspected twice a year, cleaned out. If sediment level reaches a certain amount, floatables are in there, and so on.
So is this owned locally or franchised, or is this corporate maintained and ownership, or?
I think this is corporate maintained.
Corporate maintained.
Crown Point will be the owner, 7-Eleven is the tenant, and they are responsible for all maintenance throughout the site.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one other question. There won't be any chemical drainage going into the wetlands, correct?
Correct, no, absolutely not.
Just one question on the, the traffic analysis land use, land use code. Thank you for doing that. Did you guys do any memo to file just to document that analysis?
So, Charlie, you want to?
We didn't, but we can.
For the record, I'm Charlie Baker with VHB.
Whichever gets green light on.
We didn't prepare a memo, but I'd be happy to if you-
Yeah, just a memo to file, at least say we looked at it, so it can be part of the packet, that's all.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Do you have signage for the directing trucks to make sure they go straight towards the pumps, or?
Yes, yes. Not only do we have kind of 7-Eleven standard trucks, truck entrance signs here and here, right at the main entrance. We have truck route signage when you kind of more enter the site, really at this landscaped island here and right here, kind of with the arrows pointing, stay right, don't go, don't get through here. Commissioners?
The only thing, there's no lock on that gate. No plan in putting a lock on that gate.
We'll get you a lock.
No. If you're going to put a lock on it, make sure you can put a Knox box, so the fire department, if they happen to get behind, have to go behind there. They can get in there without ruining your gate.
That, that's not an issue, we can do that.
You're talking about the gate to the pond?
Yeah.
Why would the fire department have to get to the pond?
Because if you look at the woods behind there, if something happens-
I don't think those usually get-
In that wood, it might be easy to, you know, come around that way.
Right, but if there's no key at all, no lock, then?
Yeah, but if there ever is plans to, just make sure it's a Knox box.
Staff, any other questions? Commission, public can speak for or against?
Good evening, my name is Jay Vandenberg. I am on 136 Thompson Pike in Davil, Connecticut. I'm also the president of the Atewagon Fire District. You should have received an email from us prior to 2:00 PM regarding our board of directors. They have approved this site. As a private individual, I have a couple of questions. The first one being, I drive that road almost every day, that ramp, to get to my house. On occasion, I get one or two trucks, okay? When you get to the top of the ramp, the place flits, okay? Most of the trucks are going left, they're going to the industrial park. Very few, if ever, go straight back on 395. My question is, is that you have every single truck using that ramp and making a right at the light, which means for any homeowner, if they're behind one or two trucks, they might be sitting through one or two lights to make that same left to get to their house, okay? My question is, why haven't you looked at a, on that ramp, a cutoff to get to that white section in the thing? So if you enter, trucks could enter from the backside, which reduces the amount of traffic at the intersection where the light is. Because you now have trucks heading south that'll pick up that exit. You have trucks entering from the industrial park that's going to be entering in through that light. And you have trucks going north that are going through that light. That's a lot of trucks going through that light. For everybody that lives in Atewagon or Blueville that uses that exit, they're going to be competing with truck traffic. Once they make the right, they're also going to have to deal with the trucks who are turning immediately to the right to get into your entrance. My question is, why don't you make the truck entrance the second entrance and make the first one the exit? All right? That gives room, because I can see it happening, you're going to get two trucks and you're going to block the, the light. You're going to have somebody sitting there, nobody can make a right because there's two trucks in front of them and they can't get on to the, behind the trucks. So that is my question. I think you've done a wonderful job, I think you've addressed a lot of issues. One issue that just came up in the comments before is that, that pond needs to be gated, and it needs to be locked. Because I guarantee you, kids will come through the back, and they'll want to go into that pond for whoever knows what. But they are children, and it's probably not the safest place to do that. If it's gated and no trespassing signs, it's clear you cannot enter that area, and they don't have access. Okay? Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alan Boizel. We live on 38 Atewagon. That exit road right there is just still facing our home, and their barrier on the north doesn't cover our home. And I would like to know if there's some way to get a, I'm retired, we don't have a lot of money, and if there's some way we can get a rebate to put some, a barrier up there, a number of 12-foot hedges.
Hi, my name's Kaylee Bennett. I actually live on Broad Street, but I have a lot of family that has lake house, Alexander Lake House, houses. So we, I don't know if anybody knows this, but the past two years, two, three years, we have new bald eagle nests, right where the old, like, where everybody used to go roller skating and everything. With all the extra noise, that's going to deteriorate and scare the birds, the bird, uh, sorry, the bald eagles away. As well as, we had a bear not too long ago hit on 395, taking 11 acres away from the animals. It's just going to increase all the animals getting hit on 395. Like, that bear, didn't it sit for like a day or two before it could get taken away? Like, will we, what is our benefit from this, is my biggest question? And why isn't necessary, is my also biggest question. We have a service station in Plainfield. I, I just, I don't see the need for it. And we have so many endangered species, I don't know what they're talking about, honestly. And with everything going, I mean, the lake is not that far off. We, this area should be preserved. It's just my opinion.
Thank you, anybody else?
Mark Dumas from Blueville. I think it's a very good fit for that area, because we're just going to get all the cars, not the cars, the trucks out of Davil on 101, which is just a mess when you got three or four Walgreen trucks coming in there. And they, we only have one pump in the Town of Killenly for diesel fuel, that I know of. And I just say that is a good fit for that place. Keep the commercial trucks up in Atewagon where they already are. And, and as far as being wrecking a woodland, all it is is invasive plants in that, by that area. So that's my part, I think it's a good fit.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Birdie. I live at one twenty-five Lake Road in Davil. I spoke at the last hearing about this and some of my main concerns were the tra, the traffic and the fact that there was already numerous gas stations that already exist and everyone can look at my previous public comments. But I did some researching on Seven-Eleven. And did you know all of the lawsuits that they have for spillage? Let's see, in two thousand eighteen, there was, there was a lawsuit in February twenty twenty-three, there was a lawsuit. There was another one in twenty twenty-three in April. And Seven-Eleven has faced various lawsuits related to fuel leaks, including settlements or environmental violations in California and New York, and ongoing litigation over fuel quality and storage tank issues. And a lot of people in this area already have information on the recent findings of PFAS or forever chemicals that have been going on down in Davil. So we already have that environmental issue. And just because the developers, you know, try to convince us, oh, well, you know, we are complying, we do regulations, that doesn't take away from the concerns of people that live here. And we already have no signs on Lake Road, like I was in my public comment separate. But truckers are gonna take their GPS and it's gonna take them through Lake Road from one oh one and try to get a faster spot down to that area. And, you know, just because they, you know, say comply a lot or listening to regulations, it's still not hearing what us people who live here are trying to say. Effects our everyday lives and I respect the fact that they've tried to make some modifications. But we, Killingley is known for, you know, preserving our small town, and if we take that away, who does it really benefit? I don't think it's gonna benefit us at all. And have you checked the history of these developers or Seven-Eleven besides some of these lawsuits that I've found? Like, I could go on and on, there are so many lawsuits. I just don't have enough time to read them all, but I could give you copies of them. And not only that, but what about crime? I mean, I think that if we have a truck stop that is like this in this location, there's gonna be an uptick in crime. And I'm not saying that certain populations or criminals or anything like that, but it's just facts of what happens at large truck stops like this. And there's already one in Plainfield, which is what, ten, twelve minutes from here? And there's so many different gas stations within a three to five mile radius, it's just quite ridiculous. And I think that if we go forward with this, I mean, it's so many people that's gonna be impacted. Not just the neighbors that are across the street or next to it or behind it, but everybody along the lake and along Lake Road, everybody lives by Free L.A., all the way down by the schools even. So I really am not in support of this. My neighbors that I've spoken to are not in support of this. And for the people who do live next door, what about parents who have kids and late night traffic? You're telling me that they're not gonna be affected? That's really hard to believe because of the ongoing noises, especially if it's twenty-four seven. So I think that you guys should take all this into consideration because having a peaceful life for the community is better than money in pockets. Thanks.
Anybody else speaking to this?
How's everybody doing? My name is Eric Broder. I live sixteen Atewagon. I'm a little bit off to the side. My only concern is public health risk. Benzene, I know there's a lot of stuff that just kind of evaporates at the pump. And believe it or not, a lot of times burning chemicals is safer than just letting them straight up evaporate. Any kind of ethanol, stuff like that, that comes over there, it's probably not gonna be too much of a concern, but there's a lot of heavy metals, a lot of things. Obviously, you guys have a nice little retention pond down there. I'm not totally convinced that it's not gonna overflow at some point with heavy rains, a flood, who the heck knows? I mean, we've been getting storms come up the coast. It just looks like an environmental disaster waiting to happen. That brook that runs right by, all the wetlands back there. I mean, if you guys are gonna guarantee me that none of that ever gets spoiled, sure, but you guys can't do that, no one can. So, I mean, I'm obviously opposed to it. I know groundwater contamination is a risk for all the public wells. I know that there's tons of literature that basically state that if you live near a gas station, you have a higher risk of cancer, you have a higher risk of other adverse health effects. So I don't really see why I would want it next to my house. I don't think you guys would want it next to yours either. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Now, I'm no expert. I'm Alina Vandenberg.
Name and address?
Alina Vandenberg, one thirty-six Thompson Pike, Davil, which is the Atewagon section of Davil. We've lived here since nineteen seventy-seven and we have seen lots of changes. As far as lawsuits and stuff, I bet you every single company that's around us has had lots of lawsuits. I think it's part of life these days. I'd like to agree with what Mark said, and I do support this. I'm not living next door to it, but you talk about cancer. I live in the country. I've got a cancer that's not curable. What do I blame it on? I don't know. And I'm sorry, but I think it would help the community a lot.
Anybody else? Henry, did you have some there? Oh, I'm sorry.
Michelle Murphy, three twenty-five Breakneck Hill Road. My only concern would be, I definitely wanna second what the gentleman said about you have to have something for the house across the street. Like, you know, maybe you guys can chip in for some bushes or something like that. That's a real concern. And coincidentally, I knocked on thirteen hundred doors last month. And on this particular issue, I just wanted to relay, like, people were divided. There was support for it and there was some support against it. So I'm just letting you know that, that that's what's out there.
Thank you. Anybody else? If you wanted to address any of these questions, so that they have answers.
Sure, the one comment I would like to address, and Reggie, if you have anything you wanna chime in, is we have spoken with one of the neighbors and by all means, we could work with both neighbors to put up a landscape buffer of evergreens for both their properties. Reggie, if you have anything else you wanna address, if you can hear us.
Can everybody, everybody hear me?
Yep.
This is Reggie, Reggie, coach, with Crown Point.
Appreciate everyone's thoughts and considerations.
Just echoing Perry to the neighbors that stepped up, we are happy to sit down with you, talk through the right landscaping plan. That is something we're happy to support you on and talk through. And in terms of Seven-Eleven and this location, we are actively developing a number of other projects with Seven-Eleven. We're an active commercial and residential developer across Connecticut. We spend countless amount of hours trying to find the right site for them. And this site specifically has been on the radar for a very long time. Seven-Eleven is not a quick-to-make-decision group. They are a national and global leader in what they do. They have over thirteen thousand locations across the U.S. and North America. Obviously, that comes with lawsuits. But they have an incredible focus on maintaining best-in-class operations for what they do. They committed on a very long-term basis to this location. We're their developer and builder. We're making a large financial commitment here. This will be a tax generator. It will be an employer of a number of people. It will be an amenity to the large industrial base that Killingley has. And most importantly, it's a logical use for a commercially zoned location. It's directly off of the highway. They wanna capture the right truck traffic. They wanna serve the Killingley community and everything around it, but this is a project we've spent an incredible amount of time on. We have ultra conviction in this location. Seven-Eleven site selection criteria is as heavy-screaming as you could possibly get. In terms of demand for this location, they know they would kill it. They would never make a fifteen-up to thirty-five-year commitment to this location if they didn't feel that it was viable. And we would never be spending the money to get it built if we didn't feel that this was a feasible location. So we're excited to hopefully get this built. We hope to do more in Killingley. If anyone looks at other projects we've developed or speaks with other planning and zoning commissions across other towns in Connecticut, we are the right fiduciary for the project we build. We have a very long-term view. We are not a build-dis-sell developer. We build to hold, which means we're looking for towns and communities that could be the right partners for us, that have the right fabric. Killingley has this fabric and this specific location is perfect for what we wanna do here.
I can, I can address a couple other comments that were made by the poller. Again, Mark Rocky, VHB. I think one comment was regarding a possible curb cutoff of the I three ninety-five exit ramp here. That's, that's strictly not allowed by Connecticut DOT. There's actually a non-access highway line associated with this property. And that non-access highway line comes up, this westerly property line and all the way over to approximately a hundred and sixty feet, which is why this particular carpet is where it is. We can't get any closer to the east, which I, I believe I explained in the last meeting. But we cannot have another curb cut coming off of the exit ramp. It can only be as close as possible right here, so we're trying to accommodate that. In terms of traffic truck flow, this is the preferred route. All of these pumps for the diesel trucks are high-speed pumps. And there's actually a pump on either side for the tractor-trailers to be fueling two sides at once, so they can get in, fuel up, and get out as, as quick as possible. There are five bays for that, so we should easily be able to accommodate the truck traffic coming through here. And I believe there's a comment about essentially the safety of this stormwater basin here. I, I almost wanna get rid of, or get away from using the term pond. We did do soil testing here, like I said last time. The infiltration grades for the sub, subsoils and the sand are actually very well, they're phenomenal. And for, for a number of storm events and the higher storm events, two- and ten-year storms, per our analysis, which is our expertise here, we, we will not even see stormwater exiting this basin. A lot of it's gonna be infiltrated into the ground. It's only until the higher storm events where you see controlled outlet of flow out of the outlet control overflow here and with the pipe system here. We design these all the time, they're very successful. We do have a conservative approach to that. But I think what I'm trying to say is at the end of the day, you're not gonna see standing water here. Yes, for a very heavy, you know, three, five, eight-inch storm, you will see standing water, but that is anticipated to infiltrate within two days. So again, this should be ninety percent of the time, a dry, a dry pond, infiltration pond. In terms of the hedges for the neighbors, just like Perry had mentioned, we are willing to install some evergreens along the frontage of the properties along here. So we are trying to be a neighbor with the neighbors across the street. We are willing to do that. And I think last, just a couple last comments. In terms of what your town engineer has reviewed and what we have designed for the stormwater management system, we don't expect, how do I put this, you know, crazy, out-of-control stormwater discharge flows out of this. We, we go, we design up to a hundred-year catastrophic storm event. And we do believe, based on this design, it'll be a very controlled outlet, even at, even at a very intense storm rate. And we're not exceeding any existing conditions. We're not exceeding peak runoff from existing conditions. And I think last, as, as Reggie had mentioned, you know, Seven-Eleven, they are experts at what they do. They have vapor recovery systems. The tanks underground are double-walled fiberglass reinforced. They are very safe and very technologically advanced systems for this, for their program here.
As regards to the pond, you're saying that it will very seldom ever have contained water, okay? My question is, that means the water is filtrating through the ground, correct? Where is the stream on your map? If you could show that, all right? So the question is, if it's going into the ground, how far away from the stream is it and will it ever impact that stream? Thank you.
Hi, Jasmine Birdie, one twenty-five Lake Road in Davil. In regards to, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, one of the developers here. With the tanks, in two thousand nine, the settlement in New York for violating federal leak prevention requirements. And then, let's see, in Texas, an agreed order was issued in July of twenty twenty-four regarding an underground storage tank system at a Seven-Eleven location in Keller. And this is noted from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. There are just so many other ones, but I just wanted to say a comment as regards to that because there is lawsuits. And I know that every corporate, corporation has lawsuits, but these are like serious lawsuits and settlements and it's all over the country. It's not just, you know, one specific area. And people can try to, you know, say, oh, there's lawsuits everywhere and everybody gets sued. But us younger people are really concerned about the future for not only us, but our kids. And, you know, it's just one thing after another, you know, in, by Killingley Commons, we just had all of that developments there. Traffic is so much worse. People are still parking up in Owen Bell Park and across the street at the other businesses. And, you know, we were assured by the developers that there wasn't gonna be any traffic that was gonna, it wasn't gonna impact a lot of traffic. So, I mean, what are we doing with Killingley? Are we gonna turn it into a city or, or are we gonna try to preserve what Killingley was based on and what it currently is? I just think it's crazy how we're putting all of this stuff in. But we really should be preserving a lot of what Killingley is and why people stay here, why people have stayed here for such a long time and why people are moving here. It's a beautiful area and we really shouldn't be taking away from that beauty. And I just don't see how it's gonna really benefit anybody that lives here, honestly, especially people within like a five-mile radius, so, thanks.
Michael Boisel, thirty-eight Atewagon. The bridges, the traffic coming down south, the Decker left, and they got two bridges there. Have you ever noticed the, the heavy trucks, the impacts of the roads? Might wanna have concern about those trucks and not that, the bridges.
I, I just happened to come in for something else, but I see that people are really concerned about the town and, and keeping the rural quality of it. I live, I live, Greg Davis, one ninety Stone Road. One ninety Stone Road, Greg Davis, yeah. And I just think it, this kind of thing is, I mean, these, these are dime a dozen, they're all over the place. Who's, who's, in whose interest is this anyway? Why even have it entertained? If you have a rural town like this and it's beautiful, what's the point? It's just like people were saying. It is, it's a place where people wanna come to raise families, hopefully, and that kind of thing and enjoy the nature and all that stuff. And now it's turning into a city very quickly. And I've been here like just twenty years and I've seen amazing changes here. It's becoming like Rhode Island. So who's, who's, I mean, is this just for tax dollars? Is that it? Is that, the whole thing is just more taxes? Is that what it all is? That's what it seems like, that's the problem. And I think that if the, if the zoning commission could understand that and understand that we're trying to conserve space here, we're trying to conserve this rural quality. And maybe they could be a little bit more in tune with that. and maybe they could be a little bit more in tune with that, that's all. And that's what I'll end with.
Hi, Jennifer Poitras, I'm off of Broad Street in Danielson. So, we're called the Last Green Valley for a reason. Taking away eleven acres takes away a little bit more of that green. Having all of these trucks, I understand that we have industry, and we're trying to keep up with the times, and that's fine. However, I don't feel that this is necessary in this area. It's going to take away a lot, and Lake, Jasmine, I think? She was saying how the traffic in Davil is just insane. I got in an accident just trying to go to the bank. And, you know, you can't get anywhere because it's just, it's trucks and people flying by, and this is just going to increase all of that. So, I oppose this. I have trucks going down Broad Street, which is not zoned for this. So, and like she said, the GPS just takes them on the easiest route. What's to say that it's not going to go down Lake Road? That's not zoned for these trucks at all. It just doesn't make any sense. And, you know, instead of putting our energy in something like this, why don't we put our energy downtown? Do something like Putnam did. It took them years, yes, to build it up to what it is now, but there have a lot of people come around from all other towns and other areas to spend their money in that town. I don't understand why we can't do something like that instead of something like this. Thank you.
Kaylee Bennett, Broad Street, one last thing. So we're called a quiet corner, and adding all this industrial is not quiet. With everything in the commons, the original commons with the Target and blah, blah, blah was okay. It increased everything. But the new addition of Starbucks and everything makes it an absolute nightmare. I feel like we should fix that before anything else, because we are starting to not be quiet. And what's the point of being a part of the quiet corner if we're not quiet? Thank you.
Yeah, I can address a couple comments. Again, Mark Rocky, VHB. So, you know, one, one thing to kind of reiterate is the site is zoned as a commercial property here. It is up next to a highway, so, you know, we're not trying to, you know, expand in your downtown or anything like that. We think it's a very appropriate corner here, being right next to the highway and commercially zoned here. There was a comment about the stormwater management basin. We do, we do stormwater management designs like this all the time. One requirement, like I had mentioned before, is we have to match the previously, the pre-existing conditions of runoff and volume of runoff, so I can at least say that the design of the basin with the infiltration should not impact beyond what's already happening today with stormwater runoff. According to our calculations, and that were reviewed by your town engineer who agreed with, with those. We did supply traffic analysis last time, so we addressed a number of traffic comments and concerns last time. And just a number of, you know, I, I obviously can't speak on, you know, any past environmental issues in other states. I have no idea how old other tanks were, if they were twenty years old or things like that. But these are, again, state-of-the-art fiberglass reinforced tanks, vapor control systems, so it's, it's really a top-line, state-of-the-art system for, for this proposed gas station use here, so.
I've got like three questions. One of them is, you know, the dual-sided tanks. To, to, so you have an alarm system basically between the layers? So if the, the internal one starts leaking, you get instant notification that there's a leak in the system and address that? Is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
And then, I, I, I don't, you know, I, I guess I'm ignorant on this. I don't understand the, the, the water runoff containment. So that pond that's dry most of the time, you'll have infiltration into the ground? So, what's, so the point of that is just to prevent water from running off the site onto neighboring properties? Is that it?
Yeah, so, I'll give you a quick synopsis. So, general engineering practice for stormwater management is, you know, if, if you have a vacant site just like this, water gets absorbed into the ground. When that water in the ground is actually like a sponge, when it's filled up, it starts to produce runoff off the site. So, for the, for various storm events, small storm events, two-year storm events, all the way up to ten, twenty-five, hundred-year storm events, that produces X number of flow coming off the site under today's conditions. So, what our job is, when you install a new impervious parking lot, the water can't directly initially absorb into the ground. It, it runs off, so that's the increase in runoff from the impervious parking lot. So, one way to manage that is with this stormwater detention basin. It's a simple design, but it's a very effective design. So what we do is we take into account not only the infiltration of the subsoils, the very sandy subsoils, with all of our pretreatment devices, you know, the deep sump hooded catch basins, like I said before, water quality units. There's a four-bay prior to the actual infiltration basin. And what we do is we do have calculations and analysis, we run those through our model. And right here, you'll see what this black line represents is a pipe, and right here is what's called an outlet control structure. And essentially, it's a concrete structure with different orifices within the face of the structure. So as the pond water comes up, hits an orifice, and it goes out. So think of a, think of a bathtub, right? So this is our bathtub filling up. We have specifically designed orifices that we can understand and calculate the rate of release of those orifices, and we can control the amount of runoff that's coming off the site. So that's essentially our job, is to control the amount of runoff that's coming off the site to match, or actually, in this case, we're actually reducing what's coming off from today's conditions, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and just a follow-up on that. So you said something about like a prefiltration? So, before that seeps into the ground, it's, it's filtered in some way before reaching that pond? So say you had like a minor spill, which happens all the time at every, every gas station, unfortunately.
Yep.
You know, talking maybe a cup full of diesel fuel or oil or whatever. Would that get filtered by those systems before?
Yeah, so, so the, the first line of defense around the perimeter of the pumps, one of the commission members brought it up last time, the V-notch grooves, right? Those are for minor spills and things like that. A lot of, a lot of tires come with oils, and they just naturally track oils and grit into any parking lot. So, the, the theory behind it in stormwater management is called the first flush, right? So the first flush is considered the ninetieth percentile of runoff, so it's a, it's a one-inch runoff that we're trying to, trying to capture and treat. So the theory behind it is that first inch of runoff falls in the ground. That carries the majority of pollutants. And the way this is designed is, is a treatment train effect, where there's a number of series daisy chained of water quality treatment devices in effect before it actually gets into the final infiltration. So the first measure is, is a catch basin with a deep sump, a four-foot deep sump and a hooded outlet. So the deep sump captures a lot of sediment, a lot of heavier stuff flows down to the bottom. The hood that's over the outlet will capture any floatables from preventing out. Should anything bypass that and get through the hood, the second treatment train device is what's called a hydrodynamic water quality unit. It's a, it's a swirl type unit. And these units are designed specifically for this vector vortex style. And, and plenty of studies, and, and New Jersey NCAT have, have studied these units tremendously, and they have very good, what's called TSS, total suspended solid removal rates, which is what I was saying before, how this is specifically designed and sized for that proper TSS volume. So should anything bypass that, we have a third line of defense, which is the four-bay within the basin here. The four-bay is then designed to capture any more sediment that may bypass any of those, any of those devices and kind of get trapped and captured and with our operation and maintenance plan be maintained over the years. And then finally, which is an approved, approved, what's called a primary treatment system, is an infiltration basin for primary treatment, and that's per the Connecticut DEP Stormwater Manual. It's been recently updated this past year. Previously, we had to account for a one-inch runoff. Now it's actually one-point-three inches of runoff and even higher standards for two-year storm events, et cetera. So we are, we are more than accommodating the treatment train and all of that, so.
Thank you. And one final thing. Could you discuss a little bit more about the need for another fuel distribution point in this area? A lot of people have mentioned, you know, talked about neighboring gas stations and stuff like that. Have you done a study that shows that there's a need for more distribution in, in this area?
Reg, do you want to chime in?
Seven-Eleven is about ten tests in their process to get to the finish line of the site. They have site selection, which reviews site criteria, competing gas stations, demographic, population traffic. They have market selection teams that look at highway access, they look at regional trends, they look at regional hubs for fuel, they look at the industrial viability of different towns, the existing industrial base which services some of these fuel centers. It is not an easy process, and ninety percent of what we put in front of Seven-Eleven passes because it doesn't meet market criteria. They are not an easy group to work with, they're great partners on a longstanding basis, but they are not a jump-the-gun move on every site that we put in front of them. Most sites that we put in front of them, they don't pass the sniff test. It doesn't have the employment base they're looking for, the viability of warehouses and distribution that service the fuel that they actually want to build. It doesn't have the fabric in terms of the demographics of the town, and it doesn't pass that sniff test. That happens most of the time. So when we get in with Seven-Eleven and we show them prospective sites, the first thing they do is they hone in on market viability. And usually that can take a few months, and it goes through layers and layers of review and approval across the northeast group, the headquarters down in Texas. It's not an easy process. Most things don't pass. So, the fact that they're making a commitment to this project on a long-term basis shows their conviction, because most sites never, never get there. We have a fully negotiated lease, which has gone through multiple reviews with the state department, site selection teams, market research teams. It's gone through heavy scrutiny. They want to be here because they know they're going to do well here. Besides it being proximate to a highway, Killingley does have a vibrant employment base with the Frito-Lay facility and the base of employees that can service this facility. They were drawn to it. Killingley also has other land available, and I know there's a lot of folks that don't want to see commercial stuff built. Killingley has other land, it is a vibrant location for industrial. Industrial is a great employer of people. It is where big picture things are heading from an e-commerce and logistics standpoint. And they see Killingley as having a great place of existing industrial and the path for it to get built. This fits the mold for so many reasons, and we already pre-committed them on a fifteen-year lease, up to thirty-five years with extensions. They would never do that and make the financial commitment they made if they didn't believe in the viability of this location.
Thank you both.
I, I just wanted to make you aware that it wasn't included in your packet, but it was put on your desktop, the letter from Attawagon Fire Department, as well as letters from a Maureen McKinnon and a letter from a Lauren Santos. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware that those were on your desk.
Anything else, commissioners, any other questions? Anything else you want to add, public?
Just for the record, there were fifteen or sixteen gas stations in the town of Killingley in the sixties and the seventies. There was eight of them, one-on-one north. There were three of them right in Attawagon between, for the people I know where our, our trailer park was to, the Golden Greek was a gas station. The building across from the Attawagon Fire Department on Route twelve is a repair shop. That was a gas station. And there was Dick's Esso Garage like halfway between the river and the high school on the right-hand side. There was three here alone then. There were three on one-on-one, three on one-on-one, and there were seven or eight one-on-one south to go to Plainfield. As far as the lady that was complaining about the traffic, truck traffic, we looked into this years ago, a few years ago. We were told that you can put those signs up for not no-through truck traffic, and the only reason they can enforce that is if there's a bridge that won't hold the weight of the truck or a low-hanging bridge. What we were told is that if Killingley forced that issue, they wouldn't get federal money for road repair. As far as diesel pumps, there's only two in, in Killingley that I know of. One is at Chuck E.'s, and one is at the Shell Station. I have two triaxles. If I'm lucky, I can get into the Shell Station with triaxle. You can't get in there with tractor-trailers. Today a guy called me up, said, "You should see this, there's three Walmart, not Walmart, Walgreens tractor-trailers trying to get in the Chuck E.'s to get fuel." Those trucks are already here. There, there's a, there was a petition that I signed to support this, that the, the businesses in our park, that even though Frito-Lay has their own diesel tank, if their trucks come up from New York or Pennsylvania, they can't get diesel there, they ask where they can go and they send them all down to one-on-one. So I truly believe that if Seven-Eleven is to go in there, there's going to be less truck traffic in that vicinity of Route one-on-one. Thank you.
Hi, Jasmine Birdie, one-twenty-five Laker in Davil.
Is this something new? Is it something new?
It's about the drains.
Is it? All right, this is a new subject, is my point, that's all.
How often are the drains cleaned and managed? And who does that? Like who's responsible for that? And how are you keeping all these chemicals out of it? Like what part of the filtration system, if any, is keeping out all those chemicals? That's what I'd like to know, so, thanks.
Mark, Mark Rocky with VHB. We, we discussed a number of times how the site does have a long-term operations and maintenance stormwater manual that will be followed to a T. Over the, over the first couple of months, all units on site are, are to be inspected once a month just for general, general function. And then long-term effects, inspected twice a year for sediment and, and floatables to be cleaned out and vacuumed out and properly disposed of. You know, nobody, nobody is, nobody would ever attempt to legally dump chemicals or anything like that into our stormwater drains. So that's completely not, you know, either the, the intent of this or what have you. But, you know, should anything happen, any floatables could be captured in the treatment train like I had discussed before. But, again, there's, there's this long-term operations and maintenance. There's fuel spill protocol that Seven-Eleven has. There's the numerous alarms and bells and whistles on the tanks and on the pump systems for several belt and suspenders reinforcement-style alarms and protocols. And not only the, all, all employees are specifically trained in spill prevention.
Mr. Slade, did you want to add anything tonight, or you're out?
I think I could comment on deliberations.
Okay. All right, commissioners, one last time, all set? And, you know, if there's no more questions, then we can have a motion to close public hearing? You're making a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Second by John Seren Topless. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose or abstentions? None? Okay, that public hearing is closed, thank you. Zone map change, application twenty-five thirteen fifty-seven, Anthony Palsonella individually, and as trustee, eight-thirty-eight Hartford Pike, GIS map, one-twenty-nine, lot three, six acres, RD. Eight-forty-two Hartford Pike, GIS map, one-sixteen, lot one, eleven acres, RD. And eight-fifty-five Pike, Hartford Pike, GIS map, one-twenty-nine, lot five, five-point-two acres, RD. Change those portions of eight-thirty-eight and eight-forty-two. Change those portions of eight-thirty-eight and eight-forty-two that are rule. Excuse me, we're trying to. Eight-thirty-eight and eight-forty-two that are rural development to general commercial to end the split zone parcels and change eight-fifty-five from rural development to low-density classifications. Anne Marie, did you want to discuss this?
First off, I just want to let everybody, again, I put something on your, your desk and what it was is that it was a GIS map from the town and it goes one inch to two hundred feet, just so you know what the total area looks like. Based upon our, our map, the three X's are the lots that they want to change the zoning from. Let's see, on eight-thirty-eight and eight-forty-two, they're the two to the north of Route one-on-one. He wants to change that from rural development to general commercial. And the eight-forty-two changed the split zone to all general commercial. The area is surrounded by general commercial. It would still leave over ten acres in the rural development. And then the other lot, which is, looks like it has a number five on it in the X, he wants to change that from rural development to low-density. It does have low-density over to, as you're looking at the map, over to the left side and it also goes to the south after the rural development.
So the two X's, one is eight-forty-two or eight-thirty-eight?
Right, the large one is eight-thirty-eight. The large lot is eight-thirty-eight and the small lot is actually the driveway for eight-forty-two.
What is his purpose for that, do you know, for the change?
For the change, he wants to make, well, first off, one, he has a split zone, so he wants to make it all the same zone. And then the other one, because all of his property around there is general commercial, he wants to make everything general commercial. He is also on the, on the line, if you want to speak to him directly, it's just that he was not, we weren't sure if he was going to be able to make it. Anthony, is there anything that I left off?
Uh, no, that's, that's basically, basically it. Years ago, when Bruce Benway was the town manager, I gave him permission, they asked permission to go up here because they were going to change the zone to GC. And eight-thirty-eight was supposed to be included at that time. Somehow it got left off and LC says, "Next time we're all included." Well, that never happened. In the meantime, I reconstructed, reconfigured the parcels, the fifty-nine acres of commercial property that I own there. I reconfigured the parcels to meet what, what would accommodate future, future development in there. Because the, the old boundaries going back to the late eighteen hundreds, two of them were landlocked and they actually had Putnam Pike addresses to them. So I'm just trying to make it consistent because the way I configured the lawn, I, I, I had to use fifty feet to make a landlocked parcel conforming and it kind of infringed over on eight-thirty-eight, which you can see that little sliver of land for the entrance. And it just, it, it would just make all my land more consistent. I got, right now I got the six-acre lot, which used to be a one-point-nine acre lot. I made it six acres because I was told back then they didn't want to see anything happening on small parcels. And I think that's the main reason why you see the parcels to the west, they were included in the zone. They were afraid of, if they zone that commercial, that it would possibly open up into a small attorney's office, a small insurance office or something like that. And that was the impetus for me enlarging my property on that eight-thirty-eight to six acres. So it would accommodate in the future of development, proper development. And there, right now there's a house on it, that, that house sits over the state highway line. You can see that little jog in the highway line, well, the state of Connecticut, their infinite wisdom, back when they drew the line there, they would have gone through the main structure, they jogged it seven feet right there to just go through my front porch on that property. And then, you know, the house is going to come down because it's, actually sits into the highway line, it's too close to the road.
Alright, thank you Anthony, you answered the question. Basically, as I said, father down in the staff comments, it's not unusual request for a landowner to request that a split zone parcel be corrected to all one zone, nor are the other two zone changes unusual. We've had that before, or something similar to that before. On the northern side of Hartford Pike, the remaining parcels of rural development land equals ten-point-eight-four acres of land. Those are the ones to the west of what he wants to change, that, that bigger section, those many different lots, the one with the lake on it. And then on the southern side of Hartford Pike, parcel eight-five-five is surrounded to the south and to the west by low-density.
So you're, you're talking these two lots and this one?
You can see it a little bit clearer up on the screen that he has.
You threw it in, the one with the pond, so it's confusing me if you're not.
Oh, that's right, there's two of them with the pond. I'm north of Hartford Pike, where it says with the pond, I want to let you know that that, there's one, two, three, four, five lots, but the, all those five lots together meet the ten-acre requirement to keep a, to keep a zone.
So eight-thirty-eight, eight-forty-two.
Are to the north. And he wants to go from rural development to general commercial. Eight-fifty-five is to the south of Hartford Pike.
Have the landowners, is he the landowner for those two?
Yes, he's the landowner as either individually or as a trustee.
For the ones on the front edge, you're changing.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I know, I can remember what just happened and we did it, you must remember, right? We, we did as general commercial, we worked with economic development and we created all this general commercial and.
In the back.
In the back.
Right.
And for some reason, for this particular piece, these people didn't want to change. And these, I, I, I don't remember the two street pieces that they're looking at now, if that was the town planner recommendation or the property owners at the time, I, I don't, I just don't remember. But however, they're saying that, that did not get changed at that time and they just had to right away going back to that real land.
And is that, on eight-forty-eight, that driveway is zone GC all the way up to the front edge? On Hartford Pike, is that correct, that red strip? No, no, eight, the next one over, eight-forty-eight, the one that we show the red, the driveway.
Eight-forty-two, I think.
The driveway access. Nope, not eight-forty-two, eight-forty-eight, the next one over where we're showing the red.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That is correct, that is zoned all the way up to Hartford Pike with general commercial. But eight-forty-two's driveway access is RD going back to GC.
If you remember what he said at one point.
I couldn't hear him, that's why I was out there, I didn't turn it up.
Um, at one point in time, he asked some of the parcels, because they were all old woodlots.
Yep.
They were landlocked, so people couldn't access them. So he did come in and you, I believe we gave you a copy of it, if not, I have it in the file, of where he did lot line adjustments. And he, that's, and that's where, because he wanted to make sure he had access to the back lots.
Alright, this one, we got the two driveway, we're showing the two driveway accesses for eight-forty-two and eight-forty-eight. I just want to make sure the red was correct.
Yes.
On eight, because that red is eight-forty-eight, that's not eight-forty-two, I'm just making sure that's correct.
So is, is that eight-forty-eight then meet the fifty-foot right-of-way opening?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, those driveways are greater than fifty feet, so.
It's a, eight-forty-two, what, I don't, is that one just, there's no house on that, right?
No, that's vacant land. The only one that has the house on it is eight-thirty-eight.
Right.
Right, that's the, that's just the driveway, but this, this is eight-forty-two back here, this lot, here.
See, I'm looking at this back.
Yeah, I know, that doesn't have the lines on it, but this is, this is eight-forty-two.
So there are actually two right-of-way, side by side.
Eight-forty-two's right-of-way, eight-forty-eight's right-of-way, which is, we're not talking about eight-forty-eight, I was just questioning this. And then this is, this is eight-thirty-eight here.
Clearly I need clarification when this one doesn't have lots, it's like you're serving one lot.
Yeah, number three right here is eight-thirty-eight, number one is eight-forty-two, back here.
Comments, commissioners?
Um, just on, so I'm going to switch to eight-fifty-five, the one on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
Everything to the east is RD, correct?
Right. I believe it's, the RD that's around it is one large lot, if I remember correctly.
Yep. And what's, so I, I read the purpose here, but what's the purpose for eight-fifty-five change?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, because it just says, it just says it's a more suitable zone.
Yes, yes. Yes, uh, to the west, west of Cook Hill Road, as you can see, it's LD. Then across the corner, on the opposite corner, my site, which is my two-inch number eight-fifty-five, that's rural residential, it has the sewer line going through the property, okay? The, the other parcel, which is a hundred and something acres, is owned, is owned by a, a, a family, Switzer family. Both their site and my site is surrounded on three sides by LD. There were the only two sites that are zone LD. All the others, if you look at a lot of the map, you'll see it's LD all the way around there, south of the Hartford Pike.
Okay, any, uh. Is this a public hearing? Is this a public hearing or not?
Yes, yes.
Anybody from the public want to speak to this at all? Does it sound like anybody else up here wants to? Anne Marie, comments? Jesus.
Michelle Murphy, three-twenty-five Breakneck Hill Road, I can't tell from, hi Tony.
How you doing?
That's my neighbor. Um, I can't tell looking at this, like on the other side of the, the right-hand RD, is that red as well? You know what I mean, like it's hard to tell from this where we are exactly.
I think that's the extent of general commercial on one-on-one, on the north side of one-on-one, right?
Right. The rest.
Yeah, the rest of it's.
To the right, the yellow where it says RD, that's all rural development.
Okay, and that's what he wants to change?
No, 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 the only thing he wants to change is on that map where it says site and it says three-eighty-three and three-forty-two, right there.
That little square?
Yes.
Just a little square, okay, thank you.
I'm, you know, personally, I don't know about changing the one on the south side without looking at Schweitzer's bigger piece as one unit with the amount of wet ones in there and, but that's my opinion, I don't know. I know the ones on the top, there was, they were originally intended to be changed, I don't know why they weren't way back when we did them.
I wasn't here.
No, so I don't know if anybody's got reasons or any other input. If there isn't any, then we'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
You have a second? No, nope, no, you're ultimate, sorry. John makes the motion, Mike makes the second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Alright, that public hearing is closed. Re-subdivision, I, I gotta walk out on this one. I work with her, so you guys handle it.
The, um, the document that was just passed around, it's the applicant requesting an extension till the December fifteenth meeting.
Oh, get back in here. Alright, re-subdivision, application twenty-five thirteen fifty-eight, the public hearing will be opened on December fifteenth for that one. So if anybody's here for that. Do we need a motion for the extension?
Yes.
Alright, so can we have a motion to, make a motion to extend?
To December fifteenth.
Yeah, extend this application request, have the public hearing on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion?
Nope.
Nope, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Lorraine says aye, right, yes, excellent, alright.
May I start over? You would have to say that. Special permit application number twenty-five thirteen fifty-six, KPC Killenly owner LLC, Lado Incorporated, landowner. Thirty-five and fifty-three Atawag Crossing Road, number thirty-five, GIS map sixty-three, lot twenty-one, six-point-nine acres. And fifty-three, GIS map sixty-three, lot twenty-two, four-point-one acres. General commercial zone to construct a fifty-four hundred square foot plus or minus seven-eleven convenience store with fueling for passenger and commercial vehicles continued from October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, I got the right ones, the twenty-five thirteen fifty-six, correct?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. KPC Killenly owner LLC with the following few conditions. One, that if blasting plan is required, that it would be provided to the town staff as well for review and comment and including to the fire, required fire marshal. That for the traffic analysis they performed for the land use change, they put a memo to the file for the packet, for the land use code review, that the stormwater pond access be gated and locked and that they do a landscaping review that they committed to with the two neighbors for the off-site improvements. I believe I can add that in there.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Second by John, discussion? Anybody, discussion?
Mr. Chair, before you ask if I had any commentary.
Yes.
Couple of things I would just note. In the first part of the hearing, there were a lot of, there were not a lot, there were some opposition that was based on the number of gas stations that might be in, in the community. That's not a consideration the commission should take into account. It should look at, at standards of the regulations, the special permit standards and apply it to the evidence that's been provided. Otherwise, it's really essentially anti-competitive and it's not, you know, within one of the special permit standards. So it could be, in some instance, a special permit comes in and a, some business is located next to it or near it that somehow makes it incompatible, well, that's a site-specific criteria, consideration that you can take into account. So that, that was one observation. And similarly, the identity of the applicant, it means if land use application, you apply the regulations. If, you know, somebody was proposing a Walmart, people really didn't like Walmart, you know, did its business nationally, that's really not a consideration to take into account when you look at the regulations as well. It's been, is appropriately designed, is appropriately located and does it meet the, the several criteria that you have under section seven-hundred-point-nine for evaluation of your permit? So that, that was some evidence that came in, I wanted to just comment a little bit about in terms of how you might want to either consider it or not consider it. So I, that was, I'm available for any questions, obviously, but I just wanted to point those. So I, that was, I'm available for any questions, obviously, but I just wanted to point those couple of things out.
I have a question.
Yes.
Wouldn't that, uh, Lake Road issue also apply to traffic? In other words, uh, it's presently, I guess, marked, uh, commercial vehicles prohibited. That's a, that's a completely separate issue from this one.
It, it try, I mean.
It's a town issue, I mean.
The, the comment that was made in, in the general, general comments before the public hearing? Yes, it's a traffic authority, uh, something that should be raised, the town manager who could pass that on, you, you can't set the rules in terms of what vehicles travel and where, so you're, you're absolutely right about that.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other questions, uh, input, it's, uh, discussion, anything else on this?
Um, I just had a question for, uh, Ken about the, um, you know, the, the use, uh, for selling fuel on the property, so that's in our purview. So we're supposed to look at making sure that all the requirements are met as far as, like, uh, stormwater runoff, and any spills and things like that is essentially what we're looking to confirm, correct?
Yes, I mean, you're, the, this commission isn't, you know, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, so, I mean, there's certain standards that any business that has, uh, yeah, uses something that, that could involve a release of a pollutant, um, that's not your role, but your role is to take into account things are appropriately designed so that it's not gonna have an adverse impact in, in the neighborhood, uh, and, and is appropriately designed, and a lot of the stormwater management was, is for, you know, flood protection and, and control, and, uh, you know, there's, you know, under the standards of, uh, that DEEP has adopted, trying to have more infiltration into the groundwater, which has, uh, a number of benefits, but, uh, yes, you're supposed to apply the various criteria to, to this particular use, which is recognized as being authorized in the zone only by special permit.
Yeah, and I just want to let you know, that's why we referred everything to David Cap, our town engineer. We do not expect the planning and zoning commission to have that knowledge, um, so that's why we go right to the town engineer, we have his input, they responded, and Dave was happy with their response.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, next? Commissioners, Mike, John? Brian?
All good.
I'm sorry, I forgot that Brian Card is an engineer, sorry.
Lorraine? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Brian Card.
Yes.
Michael Huco.
Yes.
Norm Farren.
Yes.
John Serentopoulos. And Keith Thurlow.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Zone map change, application number twenty-five thirteen fifty-seven, Anthony Posenella, individually and as trustee, application, landowner, eight thirty-eight Hartford Pike, G I S map one twenty-nine lot fi- three, six acres, R D, and eight forty-two Hartford Pike, G I S map one sixteen, lot one, eleven acres, R D, and eight fifty-five Hartford Pike, G I S map one twenty-nine lot five, five point two acres, R D. Change these portions of eight thirty-eight and eight forty-two that are rural development to general commercial, to end the split-zone parcels and change eight fifty-five from rural development to low-density classification, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I make a motion that we approve, two five one three five seven. Uh, that, uh, the changes be made to, uh, eight three eight and eight four two to rural development.
From rural, from R D to G C.
Yeah. And, uh, eight five five Hartford Pike to, uh, R D, I guess, right?
No, from R, he wants, uh, from R, he wants from R D to L D.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, um, so, I, I, I don't, I didn't hear anything, um, definitive as to why we should be changing eight five five from R D to L D. Outside of it's, you know, got L D on one side of it, um, I don't think there's anything wrong in our zoning map in that particular area, so, um, that'd be one I would reconsider, so.
Any other comments?
I agree with Brian on that, I was, wanted to say something, but, I, I don't know, I didn't, but I definitely agree.
Say it with your vote.
Yeah, I mean, well, what, if, if, what I'd like to do is make, and make an amendment to your motion, John, is to remove eight five five, to leave eight five five as rural development.
Is that a motion?
Yes, an amendment to, a motion amendment, I, what do you call it, I forget.
It's an amendment to a motion.
Amendment to the motion to.
You got that wrong?
I did get that wrong. I don't do, I don't do amendments all the time, I actually do the motions. John jumped the gun on it.
Can I have a second to Brian's amendment, the main motion?
I'll second.
And that's to leave eight five five as R D.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Got a roll call on the amendment?
Michael Huco.
Yes.
Norm Farren.
No.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can I start that again? Michael Huco.
Yes.
Norm Farren.
Yes.
John Serentopoulos.
No.
No. Uh, Brian Card.
Yes.
And Keith Thurlow.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, so now on the main. On the main motion.
As amended.
As amended. Roll call, please.
We need an effective date.
And an effective date.
Yeah.
Assuming it passes.
December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
That work, Anne Marie?
That's what she has there.
Oh, she has it there, very good. Whenever you're ready, Joanne.
Okay, Norm Farren.
Yes.
John Serentopoulos.
Yes, I guess.
Brian Card.
Yes.
Michael Huco.
Yes.
And Keith Thurlow.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, can I just verify this for Mr. Posenella? Mr. Posenella, they just voted, um, they voted and they approved the change for eight thirty-eight Hartford Pike and eight forty-two Hartford Pike. However, they removed eight fifty-five Hartford Pike, and they were keeping that as rural development.
Okay. Um, you've continued the next one, uh, re-subdivision?
Yeah, and I just, again, the effective date provided after, um, proper notification will be Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at twelve oh one A M.
Okay. I think we're good, uh, Ken, if you, I, I.
Yeah, I wish everybody good evening, uh, there's something on the agenda in terms of the calculation of whether, uh, an extension, um, applied, the COVID extension applied to it and reviewed it, reviewed and agreed with staff's interpretation, so when they get to that item, I could just, I'll, I'll just tell you that they, that they've calculated it correctly.
I'm not sure what we had.
It's down under other and miscellaneous.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, I didn't need to go into any detail. Any detail, I just wanted to just point out that when they get to that one, that, that's something that we have conferred on and, and their recommendation, I, their recommendation, I agree with.
Okay, thank you, have a good holiday.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, uh, adoption of minutes, regular meeting Monday, October twentieth, what else now? We just did it. We, there's nothing.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Keep going.
My god.
Meeting minutes, you're good.
I'm about to be home, going for the home here, what the hell? Adoption of minutes, regular meeting Monday twenty, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose or abstentions? Okay, uh, other miscellaneous requests for extension of site plan, application twenty twelve fifteen, Green Hollow Road, one oh-one Green Hollow Road, G I S map two seventeen, lot fifty, nine point eight acres, medium density for a plan, P R D, original approval dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, extension is automatic under Connecticut general laws, COVID extension, good to January nineteenth, two thousand thirty-five, just so that everybody knows what's going on, what your staff is doing. Uh, correspondent zoning practice, department reports. Ms. Sinclair?
You can go first, Jill. Ladies first.
E D C met on November fourth, um, at that meeting, they made a recommendation to approve up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the E D C trust for future, um, services related to appraisals and surveys for brownfield applications for grants and remediation. On October twenty-ninth, the E D C met with the Vision Commission, um, to express, uh, desires for the future with the Vision Commission. We had three ribbon cuttings, um, for Cecilini and Chili at one oh-two Main Street, um, and then on thirteen Water Street, uh, sway massage and Mariah Lee photography. Currently, this week, uh, the Bailey Hill Mill is, um, undergoing a structural analysis on the existing building, so they'll be out there all week. Um, and then tomorrow night, um, we're seeking, uh, approval to, um, solicit a grant from the Community Investment Fund, um, for two hundred fifty thousand dollars to, um, conduct planning activities and, um, continue our phase-two activities at the Old Borough Treatment Plant. And then our next meeting is in January sixth, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, John?
So the Zoning Board of Appeals did not meet, there was no application, inland wetlands did meet, uh, they modified the, uh, existing approval for the high school access road, that does, will, will now allow for approximately two thousand square feet of fill, but it is shy of the school's original ask of about forty-five hundred square feet of fill. We, as staff, have been going through, um, some of the new stuff for H B eight zero zero two, which is, uh, an act concerning housing growth. The legislation, uh, legislator met under a emergency session, uh, and passed this, it still has not been signed, unless something's changed by the governor, probably will be signed this week, he's already come out, uh, saying that he most likely will sign it. It will mandate a bunch of different things, uh, not only for us, but also for, uh, the town as a whole, um, from, uh, town council, having to establish a fair rent commission, for instance, uh, we're gonna be now on that thing, we're gonna be looking at, um, a housing growth plan, similar to our affordable housing plan, uh, but we are still waiting to see, um, from O P M, there's a few unknowns of what's gonna be required in it, but there are potentially two different tracks, we, as a, um, commission, or as a town, look to adopt our own housing growth plan, or, uh, electing to go with the regional, um, choice through N E C O G. Uh, again, we have to see what comes out from O P M before I think we can advise on any, on any pathway. Some zoning impacts, which are potentially effective for July first, twenty twenty-six, uh, middle housing and commercial zones, um, effectively, we're gonna have to allow, um, as of right, uh, in commercial or mixed-use zones, middle housing, which could be two to nine units, duplexes, triplexes, or cottage clusters. Uh, the change, uh, effe- effectively, we won't be able to require a special permit for that type of application, but we can require a site plan review, uh, so there are some tools that we can use to look to apply to, uh, quality development. Parking requirements, there's a big shift in parking requirements, the burden of proof shifts to the town, uh, generally, we cannot mandate minimum residential parking unless we make a specific finding that not having it hurts the public health and safety. Large projects, sixteen-plus units, um, are capped on what, uh, can be required, a maximum of one space for a bedroom, uh, one bedroom. We can designate up to two conservation and traffic mitigation districts, a maximum of four percent of the total land in the town. In these specific districts, we can still enforce parking minimums. This is more of a discussion point potentially for the beginning of the year, um, where we can look at that, but again, I think we need to, um, prep and see what is coming out of O P M, uh, probably also reach out, uh, to Mr., um, Slater, to see what kind of, uh, legal advice or what they're seeing or advising other, uh, towns. Hostile architecture, not necessarily something for us, more on our parks, and, uh, there is a ban on installing structures designed to prevent sitting, laying down on public property. I don't know if that's a practice the towns ever partake in, uh, but apparently the state was very concerned, they decided to tack this onto there. Um, there are some carrots with this, uh, some of this requirement, uh, in regards to, uh, some transient-oriented development, um, eligibility's, potential awarding of grants for water, sewer, road, and pedestrian infrastructure, um, that might be of something that the town would want to research, particularly on the sewer end. Other incentives, um, for, uh, school construction, uh, there is a five percent reimbursement bonus, uh, there's sewer loans with one and a half interest percent rates starting in July of twenty twenty-eight. Um, right now, there's no immediate action, it's, we're still going through, it's a hundred and four-page bill that got passed at one in the morning, on Friday morning. So this is just kind of a first look to let you know that we've been looking at it, and we're trying to understand it, um, but if anyone has any questions, anything comes up, feel free to reach out to myself or Anne Marie, uh, we're happy to go through it, uh, with you, but I think we're gonna be learning a lot of the nuances of this bill, um, at the same time, most of you will.
And just to let you know, it is up on the website for the Connecticut General Assembly, it's House Bill eight zero zero two.
Town council, if anybody. Chairman, you have a motion to adjourn? Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.